Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting. We are located in the Assembly Chambers. Today is Thursday, February 16th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. We'll start this evening with our invocation from Mr. David Blackettier.
As you say, he could not be here because he's ill. Shall we pray? Your Father, we so thankful for your love, your mercy, and your grace. Pray, Lord, you place your blessing on this meeting tonight. Help all decisions be with good reason and wisdom. We thank you for each person who is on the Assembly and the staff. And we pray, Lord, that with icy conditions about that, oh, we get going home safe, keep our borough and city safe. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiak Alutik people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutik region. We recognize the Alutik culture that enriches our community to this day. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call? Mr. Arndt?
Here.
Mr. Delgado?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Ladue?
Mr. Smiley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second.
Move to amend the agenda by removing Agenda Item 14D1, Confirmation of Assembly Appointment to the Woman's Base Service Area Board.
Second.
May we please have a roll call on the motion to amend? Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye to, sorry, on the motion as amended.
Aye.
Anyone against, please say no. We are amended. Next, we'll move on to citizens' comments. If you'd like to call in tonight, our local phone numbers are 907-486-3231, or toll-free numbers 1-855-492-9202. If you're here in the audience, I'd ask you to please sign in at the podium, and remember to state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Please address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. And if you're calling in tonight, please remember to turn off any listening device to prevent feedback. Good evening, Janice.
Hello. My name is Janice Stevens, and I'm one of the owners of Wildflower, and I realize that my onsite consumption endorsement is on the agenda this evening, and I would just like your support in approving my license with delegation, as is recommended by the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any callers? No?
Since I'm here, might as well make a comment. I wish to thank the Borough Assembly, the present one and the ones in the past. I've enjoyed living in Kodiak, in the borough, just outside the borough, down on Mission Beach, and I love watching the votes come in and go on for my trailer. But I thank you all for doing a good job. The staff, Amy, I know you from Quonis, and the setting up the parade. I think I know you from that. By the way, wish you all well-being, well, good luck, and continue doing a good job. I thank you very much. I don't always get an opportunity to do this, but I'm taking it. Have a good evening, and be safe going home.
Thank you, and thank you so much for being here tonight. Are there any phone calls? Not seeing any, we will move on to committee reports. Does anyone in the Assembly have a committee report? Mr. Arndt?
Thank you. First of all, I was just gonna report on the trip to National Association of Counties in Washington, DC, and I just got back late yesterday afternoon. It was my first time going there. I really wasn't sure exactly what to expect, but I found it very informative and very enlightening, and, you know, we, when we were, when we were discussing, I remember when it was that LATCF, and for everybody out there, because acronyms I have problems with too, it was the American Rescue Plan Act that established Local Assistance and Tribal Contendancy Fund. What this was, was $2 billion, 500 million for the tribes, and $1.5 billion for counties, which the boroughs considered. What we did very well with that, which was, we qualified for $4,787,173, which we applied for. It was brought out that all but two eligible counties applied for the money, and that was with the word being put out by NACO, and, in our case, in Alaska, Alaska Municipal League, then carried the ball there to make sure that the boroughs applied for it. What it was based on was a lot of PILT money, and the, basically, the counties have contended that PILT has been short-changed for years. And so, this was, I want to say, brought about, and the way they discussed it at the conference was, once in a generation does this ever come available. And I think part of why they say that was a lot of information was used from over the last 20 years in calculating the amount of money. The minimum payment to a county was $100,000, and, but a lot of it has to do because of the federal land in our borough. So, we did well there. The, NACO is in the midst, which I'll just want to bring up for your attention, because it'll probably, there'll be something coming forward in the future, is requesting that counties contribute something to NACO to kind of come up with a fund to keep lobbying for the, the PILT money and other money that's affected by, by counties and boroughs. So, there, we'll see what, what exactly comes out of that, and then Alaska Municipal League, Nils Andreessen, the President Director of Alaska Municipal League, was there too, and they're trying to weigh how this would affect membership. So, it was interesting, meeting all the different people and seeing things. I found out there was a few, a few others from Alaska. Clay Walker from Denali Borough was there. He was, he also sat on the, the NACO Board, and it was his last meeting, and, because he'll be terming out as, as mayor in Denali Borough. So, right now, I'm the only sitting Alaska member on the board. But also, in attendance for the conference was Ketchikan, had the largest contingency there. They had their mayor, two Assembly members, and the manager. And they took that time to go see different departments. One of their concerns is the roadless rule that's come back up, and so they saw the Forestry Department because of that. They also had meetings set up with Stevens, Murkowski, and Patel. And Murkowski got called away for briefing on balloons. So, they met with staff there, but, and then Tuesday night, I left Tuesday evening, and they had a meeting with Sullivan's office. So, but, one of the things that I, I learned from Ketchikan, is they do this every year, and they also, on their, we were talking about capital improvements with both federal and state, and they, they are very adamant that they have 20 to 30 projects on their state capital list. And one of the reasons that they did that, do that, is they make sure they've got something in every category, so that their, their representatives in Juneau can pick as to what might come up and which way the wind is blowing in Juneau. So, it was, I, I enjoyed it. Next year, yes, I would try, and if, if I get re-elected, I would go and, and probably tag on with others as far as, as talking with our legislators, if they would allow that. But they were, they were very helpful. It was, being the first time, a lot of first-time people there. One thing I would share, too, was met a gentleman from Oshkosh County in Wisconsin. Their county government board is made up of 36 or 38 people. Can you imagine trying to get something done? He said it's a zoo, and especially every year, it seems like half of them go away, and they're retraining on it. So, anyway, thank you for the opportunity to go there, and we'll continue to bring other stuff forward as it comes up, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arndt. Mr. Delgado?
I met with the Chancellor, Parnell, the other day. It's been a while now, but he was here to talk about how the college is doing. They're getting an update on that, and to talk about how we can figure out the elevator speech to promote the college and all that it does. He brought up the number of people in business and politics that have taken classes or gone to school in the university, which is quite a high number. I was surprised. I don't remember it, so I can't quote it to you now, but talked about the different classes and things that they have here in Kodiak for the nursing, forestry, and, you know, different things like that. Some of them, we talked a little bit about the programs that they take out into the villages to teach small outdoor repair and different things there that are traveling. And we also talked a little bit about how there are different avenues of getting college credits through high school and distance learning, different things like that. So, it was more, I guess we learn more about the college so that we can promote it in our travels and around the area.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Any other committee reports tonight? I did attend a Swamc meeting today in which we are finalizing the agenda for the March 3rd and 4th Annual Conference that's happening in Anchorage. I know that Mr. Arndt has expressed interest in going to that. If anyone else is interested, gotta speak up now or forever hold your peace. And we're looking forward to that, that we have some very interesting topics about marijuana culture and broadband and the things affecting the Swamc region, so looking forward to that. And that's it for Swamc. If there's no other committee reports, we'll move on to our first public hearing. We do have a caller on the line with a comment, and I'm assuming it's for the public hearing, but if it's not, then we might hear an off-topic comment, because they've been waiting for a couple of minutes. So, our first public hearing tonight is the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office Application for a New Onsite Consumption Endorsement from Three Sisters LLC, doing business as Wildflower. They are license number 21069, and their address is 158 Alamack Drive, in here in Kodiak.
Move to direct the Borough Clerk to issue a letter of non-protest with conditions to the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office for marijuana onsite consumption endorsement application, retail only, from Three Sisters LLC, doing business as Wildflower, license number 21069, provided that the licensed facility complies with applicable building and fire codes.
Second.
Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly. All the information is included in your packet, and I've also provided you with Title 14 of the City Code and 15 of the Borough Code, per Mr. Smiley's request. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open our public hearing. There is time for public comment again. If you'd like to call in, it's 907-486-3231, or you can use our toll-free number 1-855-492-9202. If you're here in the audience and you'd like to speak on this topic, please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking, and address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any individual member thereof. If you're calling in, please turn off any listening device to prevent feedback. And I'd like to thank Ms. Stevens for coming in. We heard her public comment on this right at the beginning of the meeting. Are there any phone calls? Did they make it that long? No? Okay. So, we will close the public hearing, not seeing any comments, and open the Assembly Discussion. Mr. Arndt?
There's this handout, and Scott, since you evidently did this, I'm gonna let you report on it, please.
Well, there wasn't very much information about what the conditions were on the city's approval of the plan with these conditions. I tried to find that out, and actually, the letter from Mr. Hanson explains what the conditions were about. At the time, I didn't know that we had the copy of Mr. Hanson's letter, so I asked for Chapter 14, Title 14 and Title 15 of the city, and Title 15 of the borough. But all the details that are important are in the Hanson letter.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Assembly? Not seeing any, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Our second public hearing tonight will be on ordinance fiscal year 2023-14, Amending Kodiak Island Borough Code, Title III, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 35, Real Property Tax, Section 3.35.050, the Board of Equalization, to correct phrasing pertaining to docket numbers.
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2023-14.
Second.
May we please have a staff report?
Hello. This is the fourth time that you guys have seen it, and it is the simply changing the words "a docket" to "an appeal" to avoid confusion between the BOE, the public, the assessor's office, and the clerk's office.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. This is the opportunity for the public to call in and comment. If you'd like to call in, please call 907-486-3231, or use our toll-free number 1-855-492-9202. If you're here in the audience and you'd like to speak, please sign in and state your name for the record, and be sure to turn on the microphone before speaking. All remarks should be addressed to the Assembly as a whole body and not to any individual member thereof. If you're calling in, we ask that you please turn off any listening device to prevent Not seeing any phone calls, we will close the public hearing and open Assembly Discussion. Is there any discussion from the Assembly? Mr. Smiley?
Yeah, I think this is a terrific idea. I wish we did more of this, sprucing up the code and bringing it up to modern standards. Some of it's so old, it makes me feel young.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Any other Assembly discussion? Not seeing any, may I please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arndt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes 6-0. That takes us to the Borough Manager's Report. Mr. Conrad?
Yes, good evening, and thank you. A couple of items that have been discussed over the last couple meetings by the public, and one clarification. The landfill was closed for one week due to COVID two years ago, and that's all, the landfill was closed? The reason that salvage was stopped or prevented is because the DEC would require every time someone goes to salvage in C and D, that a staff member accompany that person. And I believe that cost to be prohibitive, and we do not have the staff to be able to do that. We have four people normally working, except for Tuesdays and Fridays, so I don't believe that that is a good expense, and it would be, it's time lost to process trash and pick up trash and do other things. In addition, all summer long, Brecken was out there blasting and doing all of the work on our capital projects, so consequently, there was an additional hazard. So, C and D was remained to be open, however, we also have to think about the general safety of the public and also our employees. So, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified, that statements made in this room were not I provided you all with a delinquent tax publication, and those will be available and be mailed out to the public next week. We have made arrangements through Providence Hospital with discussions with Providence. We're bringing down, they are bringing down a person to evaluate the elevators at Providence, so consequently, I contacted this particular gentleman, and he will be evaluating a problem elevator at the middle school, and also look at the older elevator at the high school. And the last week of February, our, we have hired a pool consultant to come up and go through the pool, and that will be happening. There's a two-day visit, and I've arranged for him to interview all of the people that deal with everyday maintenance of the pool. I don't have that information. I think it's best, best for him to talk to the folks that actually do the work on a day-to-day basis. So, I've heard lots of theories, so we hired a consultant that is a pool designer that has had nothing to do with this pool. So, hopefully, we get a good evaluation. They are also willing to work with us after the fact to develop an RFP, to do all of the items, to put this out to bid, to do the repairs and maintenance required to get the pool back up into a top-notch shape. Managers' Department met and has been doing webinars on the, with ADFNG for Hunter Access Grant, and you'll be seeing this within the next couple of weeks, with a 25% match request. But the purpose of this is to do the replacement of a log bridge at the entry to the 700-plus acres, the public land down in Chinniac, where the folks are cutting firewood and stuff like that, so that'll be coming up. We'll be starting union negotiations shortly, and I'm not gonna go through the entire report, but if there's anyone that has specific questions on anything in the report, I'm available to you 8 till 5, Monday through Friday. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smiley?
Mr. Conrad, is there a plan for the person who's evaluating the pool to be with the school and the borough and the city afterwards in order to have a new briefing?
No.
Okay. Maybe that would be a good idea.
I'm afraid the gentleman has already bought his tickets, but we may be able to arrange to have a Zoom meeting at a joint work session. I believe we have a joint meeting coming up in March with the school district. I would assume that we'll have the report back already by then, though.
The city's involved, too, isn't it?
The, the city is primarily who they're going to speak with, quite frankly, is the city and the school district, because Corey Gron and his staff are the ones who actually do the additives of the chemical. They're the ones that have to push the water off the decks where the water pools instead of runs to the gutters, so that's primarily who he's gonna interview, as well as the two or three individuals with the school district maintenance department that do the maintenance on the filters and the various units associated with the production of chlorine.
Thank you.
Amy?
Did you guys not hear the 8 to 5 thing? Sorry. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you. That's a separate issue. In regards to, to the pool, I remember when you had said there were two, two firms that were interested in there. So, you selected one here, and I was wondering how they, how you came about to, to select them, number one. And then, number two, I heard you speaking about who they're talking to, but I think they need to talk to, the people have done some of the repairs on the pool prior to this.
Well, I was involved in the repairs, so I can speak to what they did on the repairs.
Okay, well, that wasn't mentioned, is why I bring it up.
So, the reason we went with the, the single company is, after talking to both companies, what I found out was, this particular company that we hired are pool designers. The other company that I've been talking to, unbeknownst to me until like a third conversation, those are the guys that usually build the pools that the other guys design.
Okay.
So, these, I, I couldn't see bringing both sets up at the same time for duplicate cost, but that, having spoken with the gentleman that builds pools and does the repairs, what I did find out was, they have worked on multiple pools throughout the state of Alaska, so they're familiar with what's going on. And he dispelled a lot of fears about, you know, a saltwater pool and this and that and the whole nine, so I think this is the proper firm to bring up.
And I agree with, with, you know, when you, when you say that now, I agree with you, but I was, I was curious to know. And I think it's important to get a pool designer, because what, what I've seen is the same, Kodiak Island Borough does a shitty job of building pools. This is the third pool we've gone through, and we've had problems with every single one of them. And we end up spending a tremendous amount of money each time, due to poor design, is where it lays. But the city had a similar thing, basically, due to lack of proper inspection on the rebar placement, gets a little bit too close to the surface, and, and the water gets through saltwater, especially in this case. City had the same thing on their original crane dock, same problem on there. Cost them many millions of dollars, too. So, I just, I wanna make sure we, we get it done right, is where I'm coming from. So, I look forward to their, their report. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Williams. Just one question, and this may be the wrong time or place for the question, but I, just because we had public comment last week with regards to waste management and trying to resolve differences or dispute, I just wanna make sure, and I haven't looked at that contract in a while, but I wanna make sure that if there's something we should be doing to help support that, that member of the community as they're trying to navigate this with waste management, that we are responsive to that.
So, I am preparing a memo that I'll be sending out to the Assembly addressing those concerns. There are issues with both the customer and the contract, and the interpretation, and I believe that the Assembly should consider, or perhaps I need to request, that the committee regarding the waste management contract, and let me clarify, I just misspoke, the Alaska Waste Contract, the Waste Connections Contract, this comes down to the definition of what is a premises, and what is commercial, and what is residential. And until we have the intestinal fortitude to make an exact decision on what that interpretation is, I believe we'll keep encountering the same situation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? We will go ahead and move on to our contracts. We have four tonight. Our first one is approval of Change Order Number Two for Contract Number Fiscal Year 2022-09 with CH2M Hill Engineering Jacobs for additional services for construction for the Leach Eight Pretreatment Facility project.
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Change Order Number Two for Contract Number FY 2022-09 with CH2M Hill Engineering slash Jacobs for additional services during construction for the Leach Eight Pretreatment Facility project.
Second.
Staff report, please.
So bear with me, please. My computer has just died, so I'm working off of the phone here. This is a request for additional services during construction and also other engineering aspects associated with the construction of the Leach Eight Plant Pretreatment Facility in the amount of $181,000. This will not necessarily be the total amount expended as we will be billed on a time and material basis for this work. We had a lot of, we had a lot more services during construction requirements due to the complexity of trying to fit these pretreatment systems in with the existing system. So we had a little more cost than normally at the front end, especially dealing with requests for information. So we've asked for this amount of money, and if, um, if we don't need it or use it, we will not. And if there's any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Mr. Arnt?
Thank you. Dave, this is ending up being one of the, as a percentage of the contract, one of the largest, uh, most expensive engineering projects that we've done on buildings. I'm not encouraged, I don't know exactly what their price is, but we've never paid Jensen Yorba Wall or Jensen Yorba, what was the other, whatever it was before. As a percentage of the, of the construction contract, this kind of money. What, what I'm hearing you say, there was a lot of requests for information, was that due to poor plans by Jacobs to begin with?
No, it was actually due to the complexity of the sit, of the facility and also the review that's required by the DEC. That in turn created changes to the design. So consequently, we need to change, you know, we need to make those changes, which it's a, you know, whisper down the alley kind of thing, as one thing happens, it builds. And it was also based on our estimate at the beginning of this for the first X amount of months, there's a $15,000 burn rate. So consequently, we used that as the basis to figure out how many months we thought this was going to take. And this is directly associated with the COBCs, so the fines. So we can't not get this right. And yeah, it's a lot of money. I can't figure out how to do it. I'm not an engineer. We're trying to get it right. We're trying to get this system going and, and hopefully this, again, we don't expend this money. I agree, it's a lot of money. This whole project on landfill, since the day I walked in, has been a lot of money. I don't know how to, I don't know how to curb that. Hopefully, this project stops the bleeding.
I hope so.
I hope so too.
Any other Assembly questions? Not seeing any. May we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries six zero.
Our second contract will be Contract Number Fiscal Year 2023-37 Kodiak High School Roof Repairs with Rainproof Roofing of Anchorage.
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Contract Number FY 2023-37 Kodiak High School Roof Repairs with Rainproof Roofing in the amount of $235,000.
Second.
May we have a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, thank you again. This is a request to repair damage that was found on the roof of the high school on the new section of the roof. The amount is $235,000. I would like to make a correction from my, um, what I said last week in that these, um, multiple tears in the roof, including the inspection hole that Rainproof cut into the membrane, was repaired prior to their departure. So let me clarify that. Basically, what it looks as though is that someone with a piece of flashing or something very sharp was drug across the roof and penetrated it at multiple locations, so a line of small penetrations, which allowed the water to seep into the roof. When they opened this up, they found water underneath almost a foot and a half of insulation, and all of that insulation was saturated. So they're looking at tearing this down to the bare decking, to the sheet pan, and rebuilding from there all the way back up on the section that you had cited last week. So this is an extensive repair, and when we enter into it, I'd appreciate everyone here praying for good weather.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Are there any Assembly questions? Mr. Arnt?
Yeah, Dave, thank you for that correction from last week, because, um, I was very concerned about that statement that they had not, um, fixed that when they left. My question then is, it sounded like they were going to dry it out. Now I'm thinking they're going to replace it with all-new foam material. Is that correct?
New foam, new membrane.
Yeah.
Also new fasteners, because you have to fasten down through the entire, into the structure, so all of that will be replaced.
Yeah. The, um, the only other thing I had was on the, uh, financial impact, um, funding, request that funding be designated from the current general fund contingency. I object to that. The contingency was for the, for the vehicles. This is a maintenance project and needs to come out of either the R and R, or there was also the $1.6 million that the school district had given us that was kind of a joint for joint approval on projects. I don't know if there's some money left there, because that's been used on some, but, uh, otherwise it just needs to plain come out of R and R.
Number one, I think the 1.6 was used, was, was designated toward the North Star Repair with the windows.
Which is the siding and windows.
Windows and siding, so I believe that has been accounted for.
Right, but I was under the understanding that there was money left there.
I, I don't, I don't think there was that much. I don't, I, I have to get you the exact amount. And quite frankly, if that 1.6 was dedicated to that job, until that job is actually completed, I don't know that we should rob from that.
Okay.
I know Dora will throw rocks at whatever she's listening to me at, but I personally don't care where the money comes from. We need to do the repair, and we can figure out what proper line item is coming out of, whether it be R and R or whatever. We just need to do the job. We need to have this approved so they can get their material ordered, and we can have this repaired done this summer.
Yes, I, I, I agree with you on that. I just, um, I prefer it's easier to track when it's pulled out of R and R maintenance funds on the facilities rather than pulling all, all these other things. And, and what the next item we got are vehicles that was supposed to come out of there. So, um, that's my only thing. And I think, and yes, I did talk to Dora, and she don't care where it comes from either.
Mr. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave, you have someone in first?
Well, yeah, the only thing I would say to you is that I, I reserve my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Dave, yesterday or the day before, I happened to be at the hospital and, and was looking out one of the windows there at, at, uh, the roof that goes over, I think it's, um, KCHC. And what I noticed on that roof, it seemed like in high-traffic areas, there was a reinforced, like traction pad that was adhered to that membrane. And I guess what I'm wondering is, does the high school roof have those similar features? Or if not, is that a consideration, if that's an area where something got drug, may prevent damage?
That is, that's pretty standard on most roofs, roofs at, in a high-traffic pattern. There is a wear layer over the top, um, and it normally has an anti-skid, uh, because that is the last place to get icy.
Mr. Smiley?
How do we stop things like that from happening? Is it, was it educating workers? Was it putting up fences? What was, what is the answer?
I personally believe that this happened after the acceptance of the high school. I'm not going to say who or whom may have done this, but any flashing repair, anything that's carried up there that has a sharp edge, i- it could have been anyone. Perhaps if this keeps up, we need to put surveillance cameras on the roof or something like that, or, or make sure that staff goes and inspects the roof after a certain amount of repair has been performed, because this is an expensive repair for a roof that's less than five years old.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Assembly? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Dave, I, I liked what you just said, and it just makes me think that, that perhaps if there's going to be work done on that roof or there's going to be alterations, that maybe there's a pre and a post-inspection, um, to just ensure that we're not faced with this again in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
Our third contract tonight is Fiscal Year 2023-38, which is the Kodiak Island Borough Purchase of Four 2022 Jeep Compass Latitudes from Anchorage Chrysler Center.
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Contract Number FY 2023-38 to award the bid to Anchorage Chrysler Center and proceed with purchasing four 2022 Jeep Compass Latitudes for borough use in the amount of $152,846.92.
Second.
Mr. Conrad, may we please have a staff report?
Yes, um, as per Borough Code, the Engineering Facilities Department did go out and advertise for four SUV-type vehicles, um, four-wheel drive. These include undercoating, factory undercoating, as well as four-studded snow tires, and that price per vehicle is $37,720 for a total of $138,880 for the vehicles. We are also looking at the transportation costs. The total price is 142, 149,222.40, and that includes, um, two employees, myself, who I'll donate my time, and my wife to go up and grab these cars and bring them down on one of the first ferries. And that is cheaper than paying the $3,000 per vehicle to transport them on the transportation lines. It's also morale boost, so, um, that's what we're offering, and I'm, and here to answer any questions. Thank you.
I think you've earned that morale boost. Are there any Assembly questions at this time? Not seeing any. May we please have a roll call vote on the, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Smiley?
It's four cars and two people?
Four cars and four people.
Okay.
Mr. Arnt?
Yeah, um, you've got, I understand, I understand. When you're advertising for the trucks, give a little, little longer delivery time, so maybe we get some additional bids the next time.
Mr. Conrad?
The light trucks are out currently, and we're working on the heavy trucks, and we can put whatever timeframe out we want on those.
What timeframe do you have on the light trucks that's out now?
For delivery?
Yes.
I don't know that right off the top of my head.
I would suggest you extend it longer than this, just to make sure we can.
Then, then three weeks.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, um, uh, you had 90 days delivery on there, is what I'm looking at, and that's why we only got one bid, I believe, because you had to have it in stock in order to, to meet that. So I just, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to get a couple bids on it, rather than just pulling from stock on, on dealers. So that's all, whether it's a, a four-month or a six-month, because we know there's been problems. Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions. May we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
Our final contract tonight is Contract Number Fiscal Year 2023-40 Premier Mechanical for the Providence Long-Term Care Day Tank Replacement.
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Contract Number FY 2023-40 with Premier Mechanical for replacement of the Kodiak Island, oh, PKIMC LTC day, day tank in the amount of $28,388.11.
Second.
Mr. Conrad, do you have a staff report?
Uh, yes, clarification, well, yes, indeed, this, uh, the bid price on this is $28,388.11. In addition to this, Providence will be paying a temporary repair cost for the existing, um, pumps associated with the current day tank. So what this does is this upsizes the pumps and the size of the day tank. When we discovered the fuel leak at that tank and redid the piping, it exacerbated the fact that there are times when these boilers are robbed of fuel, and consequently, the Long-Term Care Center is not a place to have furnace issues with fuel. So consequently, this is the one that I actually told you that I had authorized prior to approval as well, so just, so that's disclosed. You'll be hearing about more day tanks in the near future at Providence as well. This seems to be the year of the day tank replacement, so, uh, any questions specific to this, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions from the Assembly? Mr. Turner?
I wouldn't call it a question, but I'd say that it's a shame it's costing this much. I put in a, uh, thousand-gallon day tank, and, uh, it didn't cost this much. It's, it's just unfortunate that we didn't, uh, it's just unfortunate.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other Assembly discussion? Not seeing any. May we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
Moving on to resolutions, our first resolution and only resolution tonight is Resolution Fiscal Year 2023-23, which will rescind Resolution Number Fiscal Year 2019-07, forming a consolidation committee.
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2023-23.
Second.
Is there a staff report for this? Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Assembly. I believe all the information is in your packet. I'm happy to answer any additional questions. Is there any Assembly discussion on this tonight? Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes five one. Motion passes, five one.
There are no ordinance for introduction tonight, and we have altered the agenda to take off 14D1 and/or other items, so that moves us back to citizen comments. If you have citizens' comments tonight, you could please stand up at the podium and press the mics, be sure to state your name. If you'd like to call in, our local phone number is 907-486-3231, or our toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. If you are calling in, please remember to turn off any listening device to prevent feedback, and address all of your remarks to the Assembly as a whole, and not to any individual member thereof. Are there any phone calls tonight? Not seeing any, we'll move on to Assembly Member comments. Let's start with Mr. Smiley tonight.
No comments tonight.
Mr. Art?
Amy, I heard you throw in there that I was interested in going to Swampy. Do I need to bring that up under Assembly Member comments here?
I would love that.
What?
Sure.
Okay. I officially request to go to the Swampy meeting. I didn't find out until, actually, I looked it up on Tuesday night while I was flying back, and then when I got back yesterday afternoon, checked in with the Clerk's Office, and they said yes, they had just gotten notice of it too. I think it's a great organization, the last time I went was four years ago. Amy, with her appointment to the Board, has gone, because the Board paid for it, where the Assembly wasn't paying for anyone else's travel. I went to Alaska Municipal League on my own that last year, so, but I, I'd like to see other members go to Kodiak in Southwest Alaska Municipal Conference. Kodiak is the big town there, and we're not doing a very good job of, of showing up, so I, I'd encourage others, if they, if they can, to please go to this. Otherwise, if you don't have any objection, I'll go on there. And the other, the other thing, you know, I, I missed the meeting because of travel, missed the work session, the last regular meeting. On the 717 Eagle Way lease, it sounds like, have, have we rejected all bids, or what, what are we, what are we doing?
Mr. Art, we're not going to ask questions of the manager during Assembly Member comments, but we're happy to catch you up afterwards on that.
I understand that, but I'm asking, letting you all know, what are we doing? So, I think other people are going to want to know too, so those are the only things I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, before we start your comments, we do have a caller we're going to try to fit in if they're still online.
We're now answering a call from the queue. Good evening, Assembly meeting, please state your name for the record.
Justin Thon.
Welcome, Justin, go ahead.
Okay, thank you guys so much for taking my call. I know, I was watching it on YouTube, and it's kind of delayed. I just wanted to confirm or find out the Resolution 14B on the consolidation committee, was that to dissolve the consolidation committee? I'm kind of confused on that one a little bit.
Yes, that motion, that resolution that was passed tonight rescinded the resolution that set up the consolidation committee and that passed tonight.
Okay, well, I guess, well, I apologize for not getting in on the first public comment, and I guess, I'm a little, I kind of, I am a little disappointed, you know, we were getting back into it, we're trying to figure out what was going on. I know in the past that there has been, you know, they put it out for, you know, someone to come in and study it and give us an idea of what to do, but no one did it, so we stood it up for, you know, as citizens, to, you know, stand it up and try to find something, you know, make something work, and now all that work that we did is, I feel like it's gone, it's kind of a, a waste. I know that you were looking for more participation, but the other side wasn't really participating at all, because I feel like they didn't want it to go through, and, you know, when you don't show up or call in to help, you know, with the committee, it's going to fail, so, you know, I'm just kind of disappointed, and you know what, maybe, maybe down the road we can make the consolidation committee stand up again, but I hope you guys figure it out, you know, how to figure, save us taxpayers' money by either consolidating or figure out how to get rid of some of these double, double positions that are in the city and the borough, so, thanks, I guess.
Thanks for taking the time to call in tonight. We'll continue with Assembly Member comments. Mr. Griffin?
Oh, just wanted to say thanks to former Governor and UAA Chancellor Sean Purnell for visiting. I think there's going to be some great things happening with economic development and workforce development in the college over the next few years. And then also sadly, I just want to send condolences to Gil Bain's family. Gil Bain passed away yesterday, and he was such a staple at Kodiak College, and he was, you know, the nicest person who met me when, at my first day at Kodiak College. So, I mean, they're all nice, but he was the nicest. And I think he's remembered as just a kind, just a very, just kind person, so, so condolences to Janet and the Bain family.
Thank you, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, yeah, just a couple of comments. First, I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to the members of the community that served on the consolidation committee over the years, and I certainly appreciate their time, energies, and efforts that were spent, and so that would be the first thing. The second thing I would like to say is that before we authorize travel for Assembly Members, I'd like to make sure that the budget has sufficient funds to, to cover that. I know we cut travel a few years back, and I would like to make sure that we have the adequate funds in there to, to accommodate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Delgado?
Yes, thank you. In my other job in the Native Connections for the Takanah Prevention Department, I'm starting, helping to start the Native Youth Council. Our first meeting is going to be on the 25th of this month. We have eight applicants, eight people that are going to be on it, but what we would like to see is more applicants from the village. We have two so far, but we're hoping for more, and this is just an advertisement out there for them to sign up and join in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Mr. Turner?
No comment.
Thank you. The Borough Offices will be closed on Monday, February 20, 2023, and observance of the President's Day holiday. The next Assembly Work Session and a special meeting will be scheduled for Thursday, February 23, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers, and the next regular meeting is currently scheduled for March 2, 2023, at 6:30 PM. However, stay tuned, there is a chance that that meeting will be canceled, and so the next regular meeting may move till March 16, 2023. Please consult the Borough website for an update on that meeting. All meetings will be held in the Borough Assembly Chambers. Next, we have an executive session on the agenda for the discussion of attorney advice regarding the Borough Manager process.
Move to convene into executive session under the authority of Kodiak Island Borough Code 2.30.030-F1F, to discuss confidential attorney communications regarding the borough's legal obligations relating to selection of a Borough Manager and legal obligations to applicants.
Is there any Assembly, sorry, go ahead.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Art, who always remembers my second. Is there any Assembly discussion? Not seeing any, may we please have a roll call vote on the motion? Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
Move to invite the Mayor, Assembly, Clerk's Office, staff, and attorney into executive session.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, please say no. We will now recess the regular meeting and convene executive session.
Why don't we take a quick five-minute break, come back? Scott, I'm sorry to cut you off with questions, but...
I just, I just wanted to get it out. I wasn't looking for an answer to that.
In Assembly Member comments...